Y'all ready, we'll go ahead and get started. I would make a motion if the agenda be approved with the removal of items nine, ten, eleven, and anything else that y'all want. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Karen, you want to give us an update from Parks and Rec?
Good morning. Football season is officially wrapped up this past weekend. Our fifth grade represented is attending the Super Bowl. And it was a great ballgame, they come up with their short twenty-seven, twenty-one mark. But from where that team started at the beginning of the season to where they ended up was very successful. Basketball season's got started now. We've got two hundred and fifty-four players, thirty-two teams. So we're kind of up about twenty players from last year, I believe. And last, there's one fact about RBI tournaments. They recruit to play mainly in the North Georgia area, but they're wanting to move their World Series to their great park. Which, this tournament's pretty big, they raise it about seventeen teams, so there'd be about seventeen in town between us and Pink County, because we can't hold just all those teams. So, I've been talking with them, and that will be the second group that's moved in to do their World Series. We've got one that's in softball, they're bringing in about seventeen, there's a four day of being in the test place out there. So, the tournaments are starting to pick up, people are starting to notice we have a good facility out there. Both of these will take place in June, so this after our pretty much recreation season, Recreation Park.
Pretty good. Mike is not, he's got another event he's had to attend, but I do want to say that if things continue the way they've gone so far this year for the next six weeks, looks like we're on course for breaking even with the golf course this year. Which doesn't sound like much, but it's a pretty substantial feat considering where we started with the golf course. So, hopefully we can break even this year, make a little profit, and actually, you know, make a little money on the golf course going forward.
Golf courses are typically impossible to break even, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Public Works, Ryan.
Good morning, I'll try to make this brief. In the road department, we are continuing to pave our gully roads. We're currently putting down tar on Bodie Road today. After that, we're going to be moving on to Lakeview, and then to Pleasant Valley and Pisgah, where they're permitting a course. If the temps get too low to put down tar and chip, we are going to prep all the roads set face, so that if we get a window of the warm weather, we'll be able to put tar and chip in as fast as possible. Colditz has currently moved on to, they finished up Bortown, they moved down to Round Top. And also on Round Top, Pike Electric, it's been contracted with them at Calhoun, and they're replacing power poles. So they're kind of working around each other. It's with the new asphalt, the outbreakers on the Pike Electric trucks would tear up the new asphalt. So they're working around each other to make sure that that doesn't happen, but they're making progress, which is always good. Once completed there, we're going to move on to hold at Mount Pisgah. And then FEMA, we had a meeting yesterday. They're completing the mitigation on all Bucktown's slide, and they said they should be issuing a check sometime in the near future. We're closing up the Hill Road project, it's been repaired to pre catastrophic conditions. And there's no reason for us to issue any further mitigation with that, because the county involvement on the mitigation, we didn't think that the cost would outweigh the benefit on that. So we're just going to call it that, and everybody's going to walk away from the table on that one. Moving up to Solid Waste, we received all the bids from Leach and Pump Station, that's on the agenda, we're going to court here and talk about that later. And we have received the bids for the convenience centers, and we are going to be entering the negotiations with those three companies as well, trying to get the best product and price for the county.
Pretty good.
I realize I didn't make that twenty minutes.
You're right, yeah.
No matter, thank you.
Thank you. Laurie, you want to update us on the swimming pool?
I'll try not to take twenty minutes either. On the swimming pool, I guess the latest thing about Charlie is that the company that you had contacted about three weeks ago, we did get back some preliminary information, not final information, with them. I got it late last night, so I'll be getting with you to discuss their situation. And other than that, I don't have any new information. Other than the, just for everybody's information, we did, well, this ladies company that Charlie's dealing with, we did take a look at that splash area, and we reworked that so it's a little more simpler and probably more economical to develop than what they originally launched.
Good.
So, anything else?
Absolutely. Thank you, Laurie. Does anybody have any questions on the Georgia Power easements that they're asking for?
I don't.
Okay, we'll move on past that thing. Brings us to recent requests from B. Hendrix. R1 Residential, ODC, A1 Agricultural. And as I understand it, this is to split and combine with adjacent parcels. Personally, I'm okay with it.
Pretty good.
Sorry, I'm tangled up down here. Okay. Final adoption to the speed detection device ordinance, does anybody have any? Did I do that again? Hey, I want to tell you all something. I was at the ACCG conference this weekend, and the president of ACCG got up to make his little bill, and he's going down the line, and he brings something up, and they stop him. They say, "You skipped such and such." And he said, "Oh, did I do that?" And he went back and got it. And he just, he reminded me of me so much. And I had to elbow the guy next to me and say, "Look, it's not just me that does this." Citizens wishing to speak? Anybody that would like to comment on any topic?
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the board, staff, constituency. Mr. Chair, I hate to beat a dead horse, but I think I have solved the problem from the last meeting when we were discussing with council about public comment on agenda items. I have, it may be something that would help hold y'all harmless in the event that somebody does blurt out something. I've seen in other governing bodies where they actually, if they know there's an actionable item that they can't really speak about, or maybe something that should be an executive session, they just don't respond. They're just quiet, you know? And they say, "Thank you for your time." Because if you respond, then you're on record. As what your thoughts were, then you might get into a public notice issue. But if a citizen comes up and they talk about something like, because I still have a problem with planning and zoning, having the item, and then we got to wait a couple weeks later, things change in that time period as we know, and then the public, yeah, they could probably get you an email out, but, you know, it still would be nice if the public can, because I know, Mr. Chair, you like to hear from the constituency. I think you've always said that, and it's important to have that dialogue, but I think one of the answers, maybe y'all can talk about this in executive session, is if somebody does do that, you just, you could have the disclaimer upfront, anybody wish to talk about anything, any item, unless it's an item we can't talk about, we won't respond. And that way, you're held harmless, so I believe that may work for you.
I like that, I think that's a pretty good idea, and it'd probably save us some money because now I can return that taser that I bought.
Yes, sir.
I do like hearing from people, but I also understand the advertising requirements that the state imposes for, to do that, so I understand the situation, but...
Well, Mr. Chair, that way, y'all aren't talking about it. You're not bringing it up in a public forum, but it's a citizen on an open floor. And this way, if you don't say anything, you're not on record for saying anything.
Not sure if we can let them speak though, can we?
As proposed, it would probably be something that would be in violation of the statute, because essentially what, and what's occurring is, is the opportunity to have a second hearing, even though y'all don't, and technically, the planning commission simply doesn't respond. A lot of times, they hear the information, and then they allow the next person to speak. So, the failure, or rather, the decision by y'all not to respond doesn't invalidate the concern that you have a second public hearing. If you wish to have that, you could always have two public hearings. You could have a public hearing at the planning commission's meeting, and then you get advertised that's where a public hearing is here at the board meeting. And that way, you know, if that time span is such that there is new development, or new ideas, or new opposition, then you've got two public hearings. The problem there is, is that lengthens the timeframe for your hearing. And so you just need to be cognizant of that.
I think maybe, I like your comment about not responding, I think what we may have to assume is, you can't speak and we can't respond. But I think whoever's idea this was, to send the commissioners the emails, does effectively let people...
It does, sir.
And, trust me, they're doing it.
I'll take full credit, but, sir, and I actually don't disagree with council on this, but then my, it's not an argument, but then my response to that is, you're not the governing body doing the second public hearing. Planning and zoning commission is the governing body, under their governance, is having their meeting, and you have your meeting, which you've not had a first meeting on it, as the board of commissioners. Albeit, they work at your behest. But planning and zoning is a different governing body.
They are.
So they're having their meeting, and you haven't even technically had your first, well, you're going to have it, but then you're not allowed, the citizenry, to speak at your first public hearing.
But they've advertised their meeting for four weeks.
Yes, sir.
And we have not.
Okay, I understand.
And I wouldn't mind advertising it, except that I don't think we have, is Karen? Yeah, I don't think we have enough time between their meeting and our meeting to do thirty days of advertisement.
It's fifteen.
Without pushing it off.
Yeah, it's fifteen, but it would, it probably, it'd be very close, if you did it all, because there's thirty weeks between the...
If you were to go in that direction, I would recommend that the advertisements run concurrent, and just that one is delayed as far as the actual publication of the advertisement. But if that's the direction the board wants to go, that would be my recommendation, is not to wait until that meeting is concluded, but perhaps initiate publication for this meeting at the time that meeting is occurring, rather than concluded.
I think I'd like to try that one time to see how it works out, but if we do that, Edwina has purchased a new timer.
I don't see anything wrong with keeping it the way it is.
Okay.
It's working. I don't see a problem with keeping it the way it is.
That's very right, yeah, and I actually see the board's point on that, because some citizenry will come in here and have two bites of the apple, I get that. And that's probably what's happening. But as you can see, sir, like, we've already had our previous planning and zoning commission, I think I see, of your comments, and I get up there to speak, you know, I see John and Dana sitting over there, they get up and speak quite a bit. I don't see anybody else that, so as far as the time, council, you know, where you're talking about it might eat up some of your time, there's nobody in here talking about the previous planning and zoning. But it'd be nice that, because of the time, what do we say, two weeks in between both governing bodies, things do change. So it's not like it's set in stone what's going to happen, because then, something else may come out that y'all need to know about, sometimes, you know, people come by the meeting real quick, we can get to the email or whatever. I just think if y'all don't acknowledge it at all, which most governing bodies do, if there's something that they know is going to be actionable, they have to an executive session, or with an employee or something, or something comes up that's blurted out, it's quiet, because then you're held harmless, because you can say anything, there's nothing on record.
Well, I really want to be responsive to people and hear what they have to say.
Yes, sir.
At the same time, I want to follow all the rules.
Yes, sir.
I think maybe a good compromise would be for them to continue with the emails. We read them, you know, we know what's going on, and...
Okay.
But I appreciate it.
Oh, commissioners, anything you'd like to say to my son Nicholas, or my wife Nina?
No, sir.
Okay. That's what I need to hear.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Can I come up?
Oh, certainly, I'm sorry.
I'm just learning about all this governmental stuff. My degree is in accounting. Do the sunshine laws apply to planning and zoning?
I believe they do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, in the last meeting that I was at, you couldn't hear them. They've got the mics turned this way?
I think...
And you're running all over back and here?
Yeah.
They're purposely not speaking into their mics, and when I say, when I stand up and say, "We can't hear you back here," and five minutes later, one of them gets up and has a smart mouth, and it means me in front of everybody?
Very inappropriate.
It's very inappropriate, very inappropriate. And I think there's probably a couple of people in this room that heard that happen.
Uh huh.
And I don't appreciate it. They're back and forth, they're talking between themselves, you can't hear what they're saying, and it smacks of sneaky.
Karen, have you not already had that conversation with them about that?
I have.
And they know not to do that anymore then, right?
Yes.
Okay. When you're there at the meeting with them, and you're always there, right?
I am.
Pay attention to that, if it seem like you're doing it...
Call them out.
Correct them, call them out, tell them, you know, speak into the mic.
Okay.
And if they make any inappropriate comments, and I believe the comment, "Can't hear move forward," or I think it was something like that, "Come closer," or whatever, I think that was very inappropriate. Remind them that respect goes two ways.
Sir.
Okay.
I appreciate you, David.
One problem, I think, is none of the mics. I mean, and nowhere's no reach for the mic, they don't get to speak, I think that's a real problem, I don't know what we can do, but that's a problem.
We do need to try to fix it, but I've also seen...
Oh, I agree.
And that's...
Well, you know, when you got purposely...
Yeah.
Okay. I can talk louder. I don't need to get around behind somebody's back and whisper. And they got the mics like that, turned around backwards.
Right.
It's obvious what they're doing.
Well, I'm hopeful that that's already been taken care of, we'll find out tomorrow night.
I hope so too.
Yes, ma'am.
Because the next time one of them snaps my head off, I'm going to snap back.
I don't blame you.
I'll have to do that.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Good morning.
I think I've got my tracksuit on this morning, I'm running around, taking care of a sick grandbaby this morning while I go to work. But I'm here. I just have a quick question, a few quick questions regarding what's on the agenda for today, specifically with the consideration of making 136 a scenic byway. I'm a scratch my head on that one. When the 136, not much scenic about it.
What initiated that was a number of surrounding counties have already done the recommendation that, have already passed the resolution that that be deemed a scenic highway, and they've essentially asked us to join in with them, and we had no objection to it, so that's why it's on there.
So this is a designation that originated with outside municipalities, so the jurisdictions or other counties, so it didn't originate here in Gilmore County.
It didn't originate here.
Some of the Gilmore didn't say, let's say, make this a...
No, other counties have already passed it and asked us to participate with them, and we agreed.
So in my head scratching, I feel like I do, I took to the end, I began to research what a scenic byway might be, what its benefits, disadvantages, and what not might be. And, well, a lot's happening down there, huh, at 136? Going to take, the lot traffic coming through there, not necessarily tourists coming through, but I'm sure that's the way it'll be pitched in order to get federal, state funding, and maybe eventually federal funding, but that's the way it goes to national byway. So I just, that's what my questions are, are we doing this in part because the amount of development that's going on down there? Because it's going to require some shoulders going in, some assistance with our water shut, some assistance with, and just given the impermeable footprint that's going on down there, at that massive subdivision, we're all very unhappy about it.
We have no reason on this at all, other than just offering cooperation to the other counties. We're not looking for, for its impact, our growth, or tourism, or anything else, really. No ulterior motives at all. Now, you may find before, in the not-too-distant future, that I will be discussing with the post commissioners the idea of initiating something like this for Bortown Road, but for this one, we have no ulterior motives at all.
Well, not necessarily accusing anybody of having ulterior motives, I'm just looking for transparency.
Right, and I'm just saying, we have no motives, other than just cooperating with the other counties, I think you would want to...
And it does not, as I understand it, does not cover all of Highway 136, just the portion of the park map. So you're not out where three and two come in, or anything like that.
Okay, so it's further west than...
Correct.
From the 515s. And then, so I looked a little bit about, you know, why, what the process is, and I assume we haven't made an application for any kind of grants, or any kind of...
No, we haven't.
So just at this point, just consideration, discussing the possibility, what advantages versus disadvantages there might be at Gilmore County. As we're only speaking, we can only speak to what is for us, we can't, we know the counties, and now their own reasons, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it mirrors our own, or we share that, those same reasons.
Right.
And I understand wanting to cooperate with, you know, the joining counties, but I certainly am not interested in, as a private citizen, and when I say private citizen, I'm a private citizen, but I'm also a very private citizen, okay? I'm not very keen on the idea of the state or federal government coming in to gather authority, and what we currently have, that sits locally. And I don't, I'm not wanting to outsource our local controls to state and federal authorities. So as a, still in my personal capacity, I'm concerned, but that might be something that citizens here would be opposed to.
Right.
And certainly something we're going to be watching.
Of course. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, if not, next item will be final adoption to the speed detection device ordinance. Are there any other comments on that? Discussion, possible action of support Highway 136 as a scenic byway. Given Mr. Reddick's comments, do we want to examine this a little further, and maybe table it till the December meeting, or y'all feel comfortable with it?
If I'm going to go ahead?
Okay. Department of the Member to keep Gilmore Beautiful Committee, and I believe Dr. K. Calley is willing to do that. Does anybody have any other? I think she would be a really good addition. Okay, resolution on bids for asphalt, concrete, emulsion, propane, and stone. Are there any situations here where there is some reason why we should not simply go with the lowest bidder?
I don't know of anything.
Ryan, do you have any comments on this, or...
I did speak with my road supervisor. And when it comes to, the only ones that he was really concerned about was the emulsion, but I think when we had the one quote, it come Hudson.
Right.
And then, in terms of concrete, Ronnie was suggesting that we stick with West Block, and that's who we currently have a contract with. Other than that, that's, those are the really only concerns that I had from my road supervisor, and I consider he was the man that was a lot more benefit than most people. I'm going to defer his judgment on that one.
Was it West a little bitter?
I believe they might have been.
I doubt so, but...
I think, yeah, the lowest bidder, and I believe that Ronnie's been very happy with the product that they've provided to the county.
I think a little bit is fine.
Now, on a motion, we find them. Okay. Yeah, I'm curious why he was concerned that they were the only bidder. Is he not happy with them, or...
No, Hudson, no, he absolutely loves Hudson. He was worried about another company that we've used in the past, and if we say we need emulsion on Tuesday, we might get it on Thursday, so...
Oh, okay. But they didn't beat us, though?
No, they did. He was just worried about them beating Hudson if they did.
Okay.
So, we're good with what we've got.
Good. Anything else on the bids? Anything else on the bids? Get back to my sheet here.
After the Zoom meeting yesterday, they kind of changed the rules of the game. So I've got to provide you some more information. But the kind of vibe I got from them was not going to be what they told us on the very beginning. I'm fixing the ball fields like they need. It's kind of like the airport route. But they're wanting to know what the band-aid cost and reimbursement on the band-aid.
Okay, is, does anybody care to take one number six?
What does, what does it do about your tournaments you're talking about?
What does it do about them?
I mean, do you really even play the tournaments?
Yeah, we can, we can get the field back playable, same way we've done at the beginning of the baseball season the past year. Will they be right like they were before the storm?
Okay. Okay. They will bring this resolutional bid for the station. And I guess the question that I have here is, do we have any experience, did Ronnie say anything about, it wouldn't be Ronnie if it were Andy, I guess? Oh, there you are. Do we have any experience with any of these folks?
Yes, sir. I know all three of them. And just to give a little bit of background, I'm Purple Corridor Corridor's Luke. And we've been involved with the project since we were going after funding in the beginning. But we did run a bid advertisement in the terms, earlier from September 22nd to October 22nd. We filed the bid advertisement in the Georgia Prepayment Registry. And I personally sent invitations to 15 utility contractors that I was aware of and have worked with in the past. But on October 22nd, we opened bids. We received three bids, all of which I've worked with, know you with all three of them. And the prices ranged everywhere from 1.1 billion to 1.7 million. There was an addendum issued for some minor electrical revisions. The low bidder did not acknowledge, did not acknowledge receipt, but has since confirmed in writing that the revisions wouldn't affect this bid. Y'all got Mr. Clark's legal opinion on that matter. I'll say this, the costs were higher than we had guessed two years ago for obvious reasons. But I will say this, there are some, in the plan review stage, there were some extra, I'll say, safety nets that were requested that we went back to the design and made some adjustments based on past experiences that had happened with staff and some of the things that they said they would like to see. So we have broken some of those costs out separate. That's why there were some alternate bid items. You could see savings there. I think talking with staff, extra safety factors wasn't something that they were real interested in taking out. With that being the case, between the funding we got, a state allocation, the GFO grant, funds that have already been set aside by the commissioners, there's a shortfall of about 104,000. And that, I guess there's a few ways we can tackle that. One, we could go back with some of the alternate bid items and trim those. That is a possibility. But two, this shortfall, or I should say, remaining obligation is basically at the end of construction what we would be left with. So that's not financed, even though we've got the ability to finance it through GFO at less than 1%, you know, and have it amortized. But I think it was my understanding, and I think the commissioners have done a good job in trying to position themselves so that when the project's said and done, you know, all the work will be paid in full. A couple options, other, or another option I would ask the board to consider. I believe the 2021 federal ARPA allocation has been, those funds have been designated. But there is some room in the 2022 federal ARPA application that could be used. This is eligible expense so that you could use that money and be free and clear when the project's over. One other thing, in talking with Jim, you know, the limits of our project are confined to the landfill itself. There was also some discussions after, we originally went after GFO finance to possibly expand that scope and replace a gravity line downtown road to where it ties into elegant Gilmore County. I think Jim's hope was if money was left over, we could use it towards that. Well, with construction costs where they are, that's not an option. Jim did ask that we look at going after some of the state ARPA money. I don't know how familiar y'all were with that process, but it was a competitive process. So we did request, without any further obligation from the commissioners, using some of the grant money that we had already received as leverage. We did put in a request for $286,000 to possibly go towards that tower road work if selected. So that application is pending. We would expect within a few months that the review board would judge it along with all the other applications that they had received. And hopefully, we can get some assistance if that's even something the commissioners would like to do.
Is that, there would be something that we could do at any time, right? It doesn't have to be done with this project?
That's absolutely correct. Yeah, what we're obligated to, or what we told GFO we would be doing. And they're very flexible on what they allow you to do. But the original request that we made was just to landfill. So yes, that could be done. It doesn't have to be done in conjunction with this project. But in order to leverage ourselves for the state ARPA money, we did use the $286,000 of grant money as leverage. So if we were to get the state ARPA money, we would need to try to keep those together. If we don't get it, and you don't even have to accept our move.
And I'm thinking more in terms of if we don't get it, then maybe we do that a little bit later on?
That's absolutely correct. And I would say for that as well, I know that, I think a million dollars was allocated to the round top waterline extension. But there's other, you know, other funds possibly considered, you know, using those on the tower as well. But just wanted to plant that seed or at least let you keep it in mind before all those funds were obligated. But are there any questions?
Yeah, let me ask you about, what is our status in terms of forgiveness on the GFO?
Y'all are locked in, so the loan documents have been executed. And the way that the principal forgiveness is what they call the words with GFO. You borrow, you borrow the money, and the note itself was 755,000. Y'all have already paid the origination fee. That's already been configured into that unobligated, or the remaining obligation. But the way it works, you borrow the money, and then when it's time to pay it off, they discount it. So they take that 200, and I can share further notes. I know I put a lot in those back there. I apologize for the overload of information. But they would deduct the 264,000, $250 at the completion of the project when everything's wrapped up. And then y'all have the ability, you know, to pay that loan off as quick as you want to. But do know it's 20 years and you've got less than a percent. And y'all gap almost enough to, you know, to pay it off when it's completed. But there is a shortfall that I wanted to make sure y'all were aware of.
Can you make talk to a word of authority about the line you're talking about?
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I've had small conversation with Gary and maybe even Jason as well. My understanding is ownership doesn't actually, of the line, doesn't occur until we get to September Lane, right across from Holt Brigham. But at that landfill, there's a tie in. And that's the point that has been conveyed to me at which it becomes the authorities. I don't know. I'm assuming that by the type of material that was used when the landfill line was put in, it was taken all the way to September Lane. So I assume that that's why they deem that to be the case. Any other questions or concerns?
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Okay, resolutional bids for the solid waste vendor. I think that's kind of in flux right now, so. Don't be negotiating this week on that?
Yes, sir. I was gonna, I was gonna catch up with you. I spoke with Mr. Clark about this. I reached out to the vendors themselves, and they're ready to come to the table and sit down and see what we can come up with. So, yeah, that's where we're at for that.
Could you explain what's going on? We bid the project right here for the service.
You did. You did it as a request for proposals, which gives you the option to negotiate with us.
We didn't really bid.
Correct. Okay. It was for all our best guests that we're gonna try to work with and see what we can come up with. I know that we're past the window to give waste management. That one was, I believe, October 31st. If we don't extend the contract with them, they would have been notified. So after December 31st, we're gonna be without an official contract with anybody. So any rates or anything like that are gonna be under discussion with waste management, since they buy now in advance.
So are we moving that out of the agenda?
Yes, for now. And what I would suggest, we're going to have a special call meeting for the budget here in a bit. And hopefully, at that point, the negotiations will be over and we can just add this to them.
The agenda, the proposal, the bid requirement. One, there's a question.
Thank you, Ryan.
Absolutely.
Discussion and possible action of capital improvements approval for the Gilmore County Airport. So Justin, did you want to enlighten us on that one?
Good morning. So capital program is for the airports, a seven-year on the program for the airport's development, actually for the community for economic impact. So this is just moving forward from 2022 to 2027 on projects to address that. And so, one element you'll notice in 2023, we've moved the design, actually, construction of T-hangers to six units to existing apron. That was under discussion with the airport advisory board for the last two months. And it was a decision from the airport advisory board to present that early. Due to the fact of, one, the developments going on there close around us. T-hangers are a big ticket item for everybody. That also is an income basis for the airport as well. Right now, for two box hangers, we have limited income with those box hangers. Adding 12 units, we could potentially go to almost $450 per air for one or two attempts. And those are very sought after for pilots themselves, because that puts them away from a public space. For instance, if an aircraft gets deemed evicted or anything like that, it's actually controlled space right now. Do we need to go through all, every?
I don't, not for me, at least.
Okay.
Now, this is just, as I understand the plan, the three more quarters.
Yes, sir. This is, yes, sir. This is the, yes, this is a federal aviation requirement and also Georgia Department of Transportation aviation requirement for us to submit. And what this capital permit plan does, it allows the federal aviation administration to allocate their funding for the year, fiscal years, for the Gilmore County Airport. So for instance, we're awarded as a level-one airport, $150,000 every year for non-primary essential projects. So that means those are projects the airport can undertake without offsetting any costs to us as taxpayers. And then from there, GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, actually develops their grant process for us as well, which is what we apply for for a lot of these projects.
So we just need to approve it tomorrow night and then, so there is where we're ready to go?
Yes, sir. We do also have a November 30 deadline on this to get it approved to, or get it through the Black Cat system, which is a project management system that's now a place for FA and GDOT. So it's kind of a...
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. George. Okay, discussion and possible action of budgeting. We've got two and possibly three. The two that I would mention today, and the third one I might look into a little bit more on it. But right now, we have a multitude of PCs that are running Windows 7. And we have been advised that the Windows 7 environment release is vulnerable to hacking and specifically the ransomware. So we need to swat these things out pretty quickly. I asked for, I asked Dale for a quote for 20 new PCs. And I don't know that 20 will do it yet. We're still trying to figure out what I was running Windows 7. It looks like for that, we're talking about, with monitors and everything, about $22,000, $23,000. I'd say rounding it up to $23,000. It's something that I originally thought we would put into the 22 budget, but given the warning that it may leave us vulnerable to ransomware, I'm thinking maybe we should go ahead and speed it up, particularly considering how long it's taking to get a PC nowadays. The other thing is the building that will be hopefully conveyed to us after the Board of Education meeting tomorrow night. We're gonna have to pay a good bit of money to get that moved. Sandy, do you recall what was left of the, of that particular line item where we were originally looking for the sheriff some stuff? I think it was $70,000 to begin with.
I'll look to be sure. I don't want to just, I don't want to just throw a number out, because I'm afraid I'll do it wrong. But I'm, maybe, are we talking about the amount that was set aside for the evidence, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Vicky, maybe?
I was thinking it was a little less than that that was left. But what I would suggest is that we assume for now about $125,000 total for the move and the reconfiguration of the office space and so forth, minus whatever is still available in that line item. And we'll have that exact figure for tomorrow night. And we'll, we'll have that exact figure for tomorrow night.
And what funding source for these two items?
This would be from reserves. We, we have sufficient reserves, we have capital reserves.
I don't have any problem with what we're talking about. I like to see figures. Here's what we have available, here's what, can we have that by tomorrow night?
We'll have it.
What are, what are our reserves?
I'll get it for you.
Thank you.
Anything else on them? Discussion possible action of moratorium of understanding to establish the school board as a sub-grant recipient of the county. Sandy, why don't you elaborate on that for us?
I'm not familiar with this. Charlie, to be honest, we've been after the meeting, I was going to ask you if they had a form specimen that we could up. It appears that it's some mechanism to allow for additional funding to be received by the county, but I, this is the first that I've ever been presented, so I'm not sure, uh, but.
Well, we'll try to figure that out before tomorrow night.
Yeah, maybe we'll reach out to Ms. Brown and see if she has a specimen. If it's just simply received money, though, I mean, I don't see any reason why you don't have the confidence to, uh, give us the cost outlook and have it counted.
It could be a pass through.
I, I would suspect that's the way it's presented.
If you all, uh, need any executive sections?
I don't come back in for them 13 minutes. Yeah, Sandy, you mentioned you needed some amendments.
I could send in from, I could email to y'all some information yesterday about one, but we can wait and do that later on in the year, because there may be some others that need to be done before year end as well, and we can just do them all at the same time.
I'll get into your section. I'll make it most of the day.
One second, that, call me favor.
All right.
All right, thank you, folks.